Everybody please rise for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation unto God indivisible, liberty, justice in all.
Thank you. Will clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Mercier?
Here.
Councilman Millinazzo?
Here.
Councilor Noon?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Councilor Conway?
Here.
Councilor Elliott?
Here.
Councilor Kennedy?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, before we begin the meeting, I'd like to introduce to you an intern in the mayor's office, Cheyenne Yen. She's a Simmons College student. And she's already started to straighten out a lot of things that need to be straightened out in the mayor's office. What a good job. Thank you. Okay, we have the minutes of the city council meeting of June 26th for acceptance. Need a motion to place on file?
So move.
With the approval of Mercier, seconded by Councilor Noon. Is there any action that would be taken? Councilor Mercier?
I don't have a moment of silence, but if I could request that I suspend the rules to take an item out of order, which is 4.5. It's a vote under the city manager's portion of the agenda, to execute a sponsorship agreement for the Manning Field complex 99 years. That's the piece of the puzzle that we were waiting for so that we could move forward and have a PACS subcommittee meeting. The reason I'm asking if we could suspend the rules and move it out of order is because we have with us this evening Jerry Foley, who's the project manager for Lowell Catholic, if we could, and he's here to answer any questions from my colleagues if they have any questions. So if we could have-
All right, with the approval of everyone, we'll go into that. So, we have a vote to authorize the city manager to execute sponsorship agreement for the Manning Field complex for 99 years. We have the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to enter into a sponsorship agreement for a period of 99 years relative to Manning Field complex located at the junction of Edson Street and Manning Road. The sponsor will be allowed to use the existing fields and construct additional recreational opportunities. Need a motion to adopt?
So move.
Seconded by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilman Millinazzo. Discussion.
If there's any questions regarding this, I'd like to also refer this to the PACS and recreation subcommittee meeting. I think we're going to hold it on a particular Wednesday for everybody to be able to be able to attend that.
Second. Any question, Councilman Millinazzo?
Thank you, I'll support that out of respect, but I don't believe it needs to go to the PACS subcommittee because it was actually done as a, as an RFP. So I mean, I looked at a lot of them. This is before us as a sponsorship agreement. The PACS subcommittee or whatever can certainly weigh in on it, but at the end of the day, they did respond to a proposal. So, I'm not sure that the PACS commission or subcommittee can vote it up or down. That's just again my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not here to vote on it. I'm here to explain what is this all about. Unless the maker, the person that spoke before me knows what this is all about, I'd like to hear him, what he knows that we'd be discussing at the PACS subcommittee meeting.
The manager, do you want to follow through with this?
So, this is on for a vote tonight and it has to do with the, as has been stated here tonight, the fields at Manning Field, and it is a sponsorship agreement, which may not be clear, but what the essence of it is, is that this was put out for a bit, I believe on two occasions, and on both occasions Lowell Catholic High School was the only responsive bidder on that. It essentially is Lowell Catholic is going to seek sponsorship to improve the fields at Manning Field. They will have use of the field. The city will continue to have use of the fields as well. And the point of the vote is for the city council to weigh in and approve the sponsorship. This isn't a sale of the land or it will remain city park land.
That's what we would have been discussing, Mr. and Madam Manager, at the subcommittee. That's why I'm referring it there, so I could come back and tell you a little bit more details than what we know this evening.
Again, I said I would support that, but I'm saying it has no real basis because it's up to the city council, it's not up to the PACS committee. You can certainly send it to the PACS subcommittee for information, but again, at the end of the day, it was a public bid, or a proposal. So, again-
I'm not asking for a vote from the PACS. I'm asking, what do we, what is this vote all about? Why are we doing this?
Well, it's in the vote, Councilor. It's in the vote, Councilor.
Hold it. I want to debate on the floor, okay? We're not waiting for the-
Again, I'll support sending it, but it's just, you're just delaying action. That's all you're doing.
I'm not delaying action, we're going to vote on it.
You just said you were going to refer it to the subcommittee.
We're going to vote on it and then refer it to the PACS subcommittee.
Well, what's the point of that?
It's my point, not yours.
All right, everybody.
Fine, let's vote on it tonight.
Wait, wait. Please, everybody, let's have some audio. All right, there are several issues on the board. One, to bring it to a subcommittee, all right. That's, is there agreement to do that?
We're voting on it tonight.
We're going to vote to do that. But, at the same time, you want to have the city solicitor weigh in?
No, I'll be happy to vote on it tonight, but that's not, that was not my understanding of the motion. My understanding was that it was being referred to the PACS subcommittee. And all I was saying is because it was through a public process, what's the point? But, I actually said I'll support it out of respect for the maker of the motion, and she's getting angry at me.
Okay. The thing is, what we should be looking at is vote on the motion and then refer it.
That's all I'm asking for.
So, roll call?
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilman Millinazzo?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Nine years.
Your honor?
Yes. Are you all done?
Yes.
Since we're on a suspension, could we just take up motion?
8.3?
Yeah, 8.3, there's a speaker here.
All right, we have, is that everybody's approval? All right. A motion by Councilor Leahy and Elliott requests the city manager to update the city council on 29 Frothingham Street. Madam Manager, do you have anything discussed at this point?
No, we will, we will get the information. I realize it's been a problem, and we will get back to you in connection with the motion.
Okay, I think we have a speaker here, but this has just been, just to give you an update, I don't know how up to date you are. This has been an ongoing issue since the property was purchased whenever a year ago or so. It mistakenly got taken as a three-family from the assessors' office when it was clearly only a two-family. And then ever since then, it's just been a nuisance property. Way too many people living there, way too many cars on the street. And it's just frustrating to the neighborhood that it's so hard to convince the proper authorities that this is more than a two-family. I mean, you've got 12 cars out there anytime of the, anytime at night when everybody's home from work, you've got people coming in and out the back door, the cellar doors, shades on all windows so people can't look in, and it's just been a nuisance to the neighborhood. And it's not that, you know, the neighbors aren't willing to adjust to new people who move in, but when you have that many cars on a street that have never been there before, that many people coming in and out creating disturbance, it's an issue. The other one, the other thing we should be looking at too, is that now, you know, everybody's aggrated with everybody. The lawn hasn't been cut in, I don't know how long, I mean, we have ordinances about that. There's, I don't know what they are, black pipes sticking up out of the lawn, you know, and the driveway has been since redone, which is very wide, but probably fits the regulations, I don't know. And then just the fact that the basement, when it was done over, you know, it really didn't look like it was done over for a purpose of expanding living space. It looks like it was done over for bedroom space, and the same with the attic. So, that's what this is about, and I think we do have a person here to speak, but-
We have Councilor Elliott.
Councilor.
No, that's okay. I defer to the speaker.
Okay, we have the speaker.
Motion to suspend to allow him to speak.
Good evening. First?
I need your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Robert Mason, I live at 39 Frothingham Street. First, I would like to thank the city council, city manager and staff for listening to me this evening. My name is Robert Mason, Mason, sorry, I'm a little nervous, how can you tell? And my wife and I reside at 39 Frothingham Street. We are here to inquire about the continuous code violations at 29 Frothingham Street. Almost a year ago, my neighbors and I raised issues regarding the number of vehicles on street parking and the high occupancy levels. As of today, the situation remains the same. The main focus is an illegal third apartment in the basement. We provided the city with a 2016 property listing, pictures, and a notarized letter from the prior owner that the basement was completely unfinished when sold in June of 2016. If no one wants to acknowledge the existence of the third unit, then fine, but there are four adult males, three adult females, and three young children living in the first-floor unit that is 1,350 square feet of living space. We know that this is inaccurate measurement, since our first-floor apartment has the same footprint. We are under the impression that building codes apply to all property owners. We cannot understand how the city is allowing these violations to continue. We respectfully request an expedited resolution. Thank you for your time.
Any further discussion? Councilor Elliott?
Well, I did go after the motion with Councilor Leahy. I actually have been to the property and have observed the location, and I think the issues have been already addressed, but, you know, this is, again, sort of another issue that the zoning subcommittee talked about a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a little bit longer, on certain zones and the occupancy levels not being adhered to, and how we can enforce, and enforce the requirements with compliance with, within these particular areas. It's, to me, it's becoming more of a growing problem, and how do we do it? And I know motions were made to come back and put a, you know, put a zone in place to prevent over occupancy because of the aforementioned issues of whether it's vehicles or nuisance, or we have zones so people have to abide by them. And to me, it's happening more frequently with students and in other areas, that they skirt the issue, they push the envelope on, okay, just, you know, whether it's a relative or not relative, we do have rules, and I think it's frustrating to neighbors who abide by those rules. And, let's face it, it's about making money, and those individuals who are letting people live there and paying them to live there, and they're making money off it. So, you know, what is the next step? I know the law department and inspectional services are looking at it, but to me, it's an enforcement issue, and what does it take to ensure that property isn't being used by the three family, or that multiple families aren't living there? I know it's not an easy matter, Madam Manager, but, you know, we just brought this forward as another example of something that's taking place in the city. So, that's all I have to say. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This, Mr. Mason's correct, this has been before us multiple times, and I, and maybe it was a year ago. I'm sure that he's correct in that. And, I think that, that back then, we expected that there was going to be a resolution, but apparently there isn't any. But this is a problem property in the neighborhood, and so, we, they deserve to understand either that, that the property's not in compliance, and that we take action to make sure it's brought in compliance, or if it is in compliance, then the neighbors need to understand why it's okay for them to have as many cars and as many people living there as they should, one way or the other. But it shouldn't just have dragged on, and this has dragged on now for several months without any resolution. And I think every member of this city council was under the impression that this was all squared away, and apparently it has not been.
Any further, Councilor Conway? Yeah, just very quickly, through you to the city manager. At this particular point, I mean, I certainly hear the frustration, could you, could you outline what the next steps would be for something like this here?
So, Mr. Mayor, obviously this is a motion, we will get back to the council with the full report. I know inspectional services is present here tonight. This hasn't been on the agenda since I've been here, and I do have a list of unanswered motions, and this wasn't one of them. That notwithstanding, we will totally make this a priority and get a report from inspectional services, as well as the law department. And we do have existing ordinances that has been mentioned here tonight, and if people are violating those, they need to be dealt with. So, but we will get back to you with that, and, as well as the steps that not only need to be taken, but steps that will be taken.
Thank you. Councilor?
Thank you. I know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know discussion has taken place, whether it's land court and going before clerk magistrate, and, you know, that they're short of having, you know, pictures or photographs of someone living there. That's, you know, that's a pretty high bar, nor do I think we want to go there in order to go to court. So hopefully, this can be resolved, and, you know, because it is somewhat precedent-setting because this is not the only case, so. And I do know that, I know many, I don't know how many videos or pictures have been sent to reflect the number of cars and vehicles here, so, look forward to the report, Madam Manager, and to resolve this. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to add one other thing too, and I'm not sure where this is with the inspectional department, and I know that they've been working on this, but this is one of those cases where, whether our hands are tied or not as a city, you know, God forbid, you have that many people living in a two-family with two kitchens legal, and something happens, and then everybody's upset. I mean, this is a catastrophe waiting to happen. You can't have that many people in a house. I mean, there's got to be, you know, hot plates somewhere or other things going on, who knows what the wash is, the dryer is, but, I mean, this, sometimes these things don't end well, and then we all say, well, we didn't know, we should have done a better job. So, whether it's us or the state, but somebody's got to step in. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mason and his wife, they have been very, very patient, because they've come here a few times pleading that this was wrong. Inspection service went and checked it out, and now it's still the way that it is. I mean, you spend a lot of money in a neighborhood, and know that you live, bought a home near a two-family, that becomes all of a sudden a third family, and the two or three cars out there become five now. That's not the way that the city should be operating, and it's frustrating to see a man keep coming here pleading for help that should have been solved some time ago. And what are we going to do when we find out that, gee, a two-family became a three-family, but you know what? Our hands are tied, so we're going to let it be. Then maybe next week, they'll put another apartment in the basement, so it'll become a boarding house if you want to think about it. So, I think we need to help him, so we don't have to have him wasting his time coming up here all the time. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go to communications from the city manager. The first motion response is beautifying the city. That was a motion by Mr. Leahy. Do you want, Councilor Leahy, do you want to talk on that?
Thank you. I read the report, and it's got a lot of good things in there. What I was kind of looking for too, is maybe if we had some sort of a, could draw up some sort of a timeline and really see what we're doing, working with the neighborhoods, working with the businesses, you know, are we going to put any types of signage up throughout the city about litter? How are we going to educate? I see that we're going to work with the schools and stuff, but how are we going to educate people to really care about what's going on, you know? Pick up the trash. If something's broken, report it, you know? You know, don't let things go if there's wires hanging, if there's a tree down, if there's signs that are, you can't read anymore. But mostly the trash, you know? What are we going to do about the trash on islands where it's not city-owned, but it's privately owned? How are we going to get to those people? So, it's a good start, but this is something that's going to, we're going to initiate and keep bringing up year after year and making it better and better and better, because we don't want to have a trashy city. We want to have a clean, comfortable, safe city, and this is where it all starts, with emptying the barrels and picking up the garbage and, you know, for example downtown, we trimmed some trees down. Well, you know, is that going to go all summer without replanting a tree or not, over across from John Street? You know, things like that, you know? Let's not have a cone there for three months. If we had to take a tree down, that's fine, but what's the plan to replace it? These are all the things that are going to help beautify the city. So, maybe next week, I'll go over the report and I'll just write a few suggestions down too. And if any other councils have suggestions, we'll send them into the manager's office. Thank you.
Okay. All set? Any further discussion? Next is motion response flowering city by Councilor Cirillo. Do you want to discuss?
Hi, yes. This was an excellent motion response. This was a great report, and I would ask Giovanni to come up and speak a little bit about what's in the report, because I'm actually thrilled to see all the work, and I know about the open space and recreation program, and how hard Giovanni and the DPD has been working in this effort to, to, to help with the flowering, roughly what's similar to the flowering city and what their efforts were. So, if you could just talk about what's in this report?
Sure, there's quite a lot in the report. I actually have five copies that we were able to make. If any of the counselors haven't seen it, it's an older report, and it doesn't seem it's like available online, so if anybody's interested, I have some tonight with me. But, there is quite a lot of information in the report. One of the things that I think is interesting to realize is that this was done privately through, by private citizens who organized themselves together to have these discussions, identify the importance of making improvements in their community, and really thinking as a community collectively about what they want to see Lowell look like in the future. And what's been really interesting in writing this motion response is that quite a lot of the things that they discussed in this plan, we've seen happen, which is really fantastic. So, they did a pretty intensive planning process, which included a two-day charrette, where they gathered over 100 community residents to discuss different ideas and priorities, and they organized the report into several different sections, you know, that had different themes. So, things like gardens, thematic and cultural gardens. And so, while we haven't implemented the garden program exactly how they had mentioned it in this plan, you know, we are happy to say that now the city does have a pretty robust community garden program. We've got nine active gardens managed by three different community organizations, and hundreds of gardeners who are able to grow food for themselves, for their families, that are culturally appropriate, and has created a really nice sense of community. We have different things like a wonderful greenhouse partnership, which is with UMass Lowell and Mill City Grows on East Campus, which is a beautiful greenhouse. It provides an opportunity to grow throughout the year, but also is acting as a real learning location for students, for professors, for, you know, for Mill City Grows and thinking about food justice and how we can be a more sustainable and resilient community and not need to go up too far outside of Lowell to get what we need, which is fantastic. Things like greenways, interconnecting parks, which is definitely something that we're doing right now with our ongoing open space planning process. It's a, we're in the middle of a year-long open space planning process. We have our next community meeting on August 13th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., which I hope people will attend at the senior center, where we've been really working to gather a lot of input from folks about what it is that they want to see in our parks, what they like about our parks, what's keeping them from our parks, and what we can do about fixing that to make sure that our parks are serving, are serving the community. And so, they identified in this plan, you know, the importance of parks and how they interconnect folks to each other, to neighborhoods, and provide urban residents an opportunity to get outdoors. The blue ways, you know, just the celebration of our waterways, which I think the Waterways Vitality Project, you know, had a lot of, was really born, I think, in some ways, out of the ideas that were generated in this plan, which is really exciting, and we've seen, you know, all the amazing things that they've been doing, lighting up Lucy Larkum and the lights that we have on the Cox Bridge, and identifying our canalways and walkways as, as an important valuable asset that we have here in Lowell, and as a thing that we should be recognizing and celebrating. E-ways, or, you know, things about, they call them environmental ways, but things like the Concord River Greenway, the Bruce Freeman Trail, these like interconnected regional opportunities for the city to get people sort of not only close to nature, but, you know, be able to get themselves around as a different, you know, mode of transportation and not necessarily on busy street sidewalks. So that's been an interesting thing that we are still ongoing. You know, the Concord River Greenway Phase 3, I think, is in planning right now, and so we've had some successes. You know, we've got two portions of that already complete, but this is something that, you know, was envisioned in 1996 and we're still working on. And, you know, another, another thing that I thought was interesting was this system concept, this idea of like getting people, thinking about when they enter Lowell, what that means, what that looks like, how do they feel? And so, things like some of the work we've done recently with some of our business corridors, improving how they look, some of the work that economic development does to sign and facade programming, to help our businesses sort of improve their visual look, so people feel comfortable entering those businesses and supporting them. So, you know, in general, this plan included a lot of stuff, a lot of things that was really interesting to see that we have been successful in, a lot of stuff that is still ongoing, and some things that frankly, we haven't quite gotten to yet, that I think is an interesting thing to keep in mind moving forward, and it's been, it's been fun to see, and it was also really, really nice to see that this was something that was born kind of outside of the city, and that it was private, private folks that got together to push this thing forward, and how, how important it's been to the development in Lowell.
Thank you. Councilor Cirillo?
Yes, I was thrilled to see this report. It was really refreshing to see how much the city has, has actually mimicked the flowering city, and, and I think it's- And I think it's absolutely wonderful, and I'm thrilled, and thank you for all of your work and everything that you're doing. And also, I was wondering if maybe in one of the greenways, there could be maybe a plaque to the flowering city with the flowering city logo on it or something to just acknowledge the plan that was in place in 1996, just to, just to help incorporate that into everything that, that the city is doing, because I think it would be a nice homage to, to the people who worked so hard in, in the charrette and, and just do something nice for, for all their efforts and to continue saying that, yes, we are going to continue doing wonderful things for the city. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Next, motion response electric vehicles, also by Councilor Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. This was, this was another great report. I'm, I'm really interested to see how we're going to move forward with the electric vehicles. And if the, Philip can come up and speak to the motion response?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, Catherine Moses, who has been working on this issue and the report, is here to explain.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Cirillo, City Council, City Manager. Thank you so much for the opportunity to look into this motion, because I think a lot of times there are really interesting opportunities, but there are so many opportunities. Unless you have a focused reason to look at them, you're not really sure what's available. The interesting thing about looking at electrifying our fleet, there's a national DOE-funded program called Fleets for the Future, where a lot of the information that's in the report was collected from. And what they're looking at is how can you strategically electrify your fleets? And what they found is that there are certain vehicles that it makes more sense to electrify, and particularly ones that drive between 10,000 and 12,000 miles. There are some limitations currently in total electrification for things like working vehicles, sanders, et cetera. It's a more specialized kind of market that may not be able to fully integrate that. But there are some opportunities or potential funding opportunities in the future that we can look into as we continue to assess our fleet needs, continue to look at opportunities to reduce our emissions, to save energy, to save money. And so it was a really interesting thing to look at here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have none. Thank you. It was a very great report.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So obviously, like right now, I don't know, I haven't found, when you're talking about the sanders and the loaders and all those bigger items.
Right.
Those, do they even make electric?
I was not able to find any particular kinds of replacements for electric vehicles like that. I think the big issue, from what I understand from the research I did, is that those larger vehicles would require such a long period of time to charge. You may not have them charged in time for the next opportunity, and a lot of them don't exist now. The interesting thing about the electric vehicle and electric equipment market is it is transforming. It is growing, and a lot of our vehicles, that there's not necessarily a one-to-one replacement right now, the big companies are starting to invest more. Ford is introducing an all-electric Ford Explorer around 2020. And so continuing to watch the market, continuing to look and see if there are niche opportunities for the larger types of equipment and the infrastructure to support it through the charging stations, and really being able to figure out those kinds of things.
All right. If we were to replace things like the Ford Explorers or pickup trucks, do we have any comparison on, like if, like basically, it looks like a pickup truck today that you might replace for, say, $35,000, might cost you $60,000. But are we making that savings up over the next 10 years on maintenance?
That's an excellent question.
And then do we have to install charging? How many charging stations would you have to put it down on, on Middlesex Street?
I think that's an excellent question, and I think that's why I had recommended, when you're looking at strategic electrification, to look at the total cost of ownership, because you're right. It may cost incrementally more to replace something with an electric vehicle in the short term, but when you factor in different things like your maintenance costs, like your fuel costs, like all of those other things, there may be vehicles that you actually are saving money over the long term in order to do that. And so as these different vehicles come online, you can run that analysis, and I would be happy to continue to watch the market, to watch for funding opportunities, because that also will help bring it down. If you have grant programs or if you have group procurement models, that's also something that can bring the economics more in line.
Okay. So can we continue, so this report seems to be like a continuous, so can we get that information on, on department head vehicles that we might be able to replace? And what the savings is over the, I mean, we would keep these vehicles for, you know, hopefully 10 to 12 to 15 years. So could we get another report on that?
I would be happy to update you on whatever basis you think is appropriate. I think it might make sense, particularly around the time where you're doing capital planning for the next fiscal year's vehicles. I could provide an updated report each fiscal year with the vehicles that are on display, what the potential replacements are, and what the economics of that are, if that would be something that would be of interest to the council.
Yeah, because I mean, we're talking about replacing some of these in 2020.
Right.
Two years. So again, if we can get grants, initially, we're going to spend double the money, but are we going to make that up?
Absolutely.
You know, hopefully, the savings would be double or triple the savings over the next 12 years. So that's something that we should be looking at to save money on. I mean, the end result is we're trying to save money, but we're trying to, but we need to have reliable vehicles for, for the purpose that they're designated for. So if we get some more information on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
I'll say, Councilor Leahy, Councilor Milanoza?
Hi, thank you. It is a very good report. It's a report that really almost is having us look at our future, because I mean, I think that looking at either a hybrid fleet or an all-electric fleet is something that will certainly be in our future at some point in time. So I do think, as Councilor Leahy said, we'll get reports as we go along. But we might want to actually start with the department, be it the parking department. I know that the city that I now work in, they have a traffic enforcement department, and all their vehicles are electric. Again, they don't go 60 miles an hour. They drive within the city of Revere, and they're probably going 25, 30, 35 miles an hour in, in the city of Revere. I believe they did get grants to buy these, and they're Ford vehicles. They're all electric Ford vehicles. So again, whether it's that with our enforcement, a parking enforcement department has a place to kind of really hone in on. And then as you look at these other substantial purchases as we're going forward, maybe technology will change in 2020, 2022, 2023, whatever. But I think it's a good motion, a good response, and something that we obviously will have on our radar going forward. Thank you.
Councilor Cirillo?
I just wanted to piggyback on that. The technology for the electric vehicles is getting better as, as, as they learn what works and what doesn't. The technology for the electric vehicles is, is getting better. And my daughter has a fully electric vehicle, and she, she doesn't have any maintenance bills on that vehicle except for getting new tires. So it's, it's pretty amazing, and, and I, and I look forward to the update. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. All right, next is the 311 system. That's a motion that I made. Madam Manager, could you discuss the potential of a grant? Are the grants that are available now in this area?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. So there is a report in your packet that discusses the 311 system. It touches on cities, some cities that have a 311 system. Some of the cities have a planning for a 311 system. Some of them did the used money from the Governor's Community Compact Initiative in order to involve in the planning. And there's also some information regarding, I believe it's the city of Somerville. But I turn this over to the CFO, Connor Baldwin, who looked into the costs around it, as well as what, what communities have it. And then lastly, what we have currently.
Thank you, Madam Manager. The report details what the 311 system does. It's basically a customer or a citizen request line, a dedicated line that would, in part, relieve some of the calls that go to the non-emergency police number, as well as would take some of the requests for, for example, filling a pothole or reporting a missed trash pickup, et cetera, in one consolidated place with an easy-to-remember number. There's been a number of places, like the manager mentioned, who have done it. And different, it comes in all different shapes and sizes. So a place like Somerville, which has a rather robust department, they operate theirs at the, to the tune of about $750,000 a year. But there are much smaller versions of that. And the Governor's Community Compact Initiative has offered communities some funding to look into it through reports from the call-in center to both investigate the feasibility, as well as to fund some implementation costs, some phone lines. It's essentially a call center, so there has to be staff, equipment, et cetera. And then the, the report also details some of the ways that Lowell, some existing methods that residents can contact the city right now. So there's a number, and it may be worth mentioning, a number of ways a citizen could generate a complaint, a request, either through the website, through calling the city manager's office. The city has a presence on social media, Facebook and Twitter. So there are a number of ways that residents can contact the city manager's office.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the managers. I, I realize that there's other way of reaching out to the city and trying to get help, but there's a lot of people that won't access us the way you mentioned, the Facebook, the website, either because of the language barrier or the way. Sounds like from the report, you have 311 operations seem to work effectively with other city and town that reduced, from the report that you provide, 40% of non-emergency call. A lot of way, this is one of the best way, I think, is work, because the mayor filed his motion. I think this mo, the mayor's motion came from the Lowell Plan, a panel that they had at the Inter Conference Center about a few months ago. One of the, one of the individuals spoke up there and saying that the 311 worked well for the community in town that he came from. And I think it worked well here, too. If we can get some interpreter in, in terms of helping them, guiding them through and where they can report pothole and whatnot, that issue that they have encountered through the city. That's one way. I, I noticed also is that you mentioned is that the cost from Somerville. I'd like to know a little more about what entail, what include in those costs? What is staffing? What equipment? Especially the equipment. The report indicated that the Governor, Community Compact Initiative give grant. We should have planned to start up. And, and, and so that said, I'd like to, I really, I know that the mayor report is asking for the manager to review costs associated with this 311 operation. So I'd like to see if we can really take a step further and to see what's the cost associated? Just start small, and, and so that we don't just say, hey, we have the website, we have the Facebook, we have the Twitter. For those people, for a lot of the people that I know, they, because the language or because they don't have those access, their way is to pick up the phone and call. And usually, they pick up the phone, 911, call, you know, the non-emergency police line. So this would, you know, encourage them to use 311 and making them, making them feel more at home and pick up the phone and call 311 rather than the 911, non-emergency. So I would encourage the, the manager to look further into how we can start small on this, maybe apply for startup and maybe start trying to work on it, because this, this seemed to be working, and this is something that we as a city, trying to get the city and the community and the resident to engage, to involve, and to report on things. So thank you very much.
Councilor Milanoza, did you have the end? All right, next we have Domino's paving grant. Councilor Mercia?
Can I, so can we go back? So what, what is the status? You're going to come back to us a little bit more? I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I remember visiting Worcester when we were doing the trash, changing over to the solid waste collection, and they had 311. That was a number of years ago. But I think, as you highlighted in the report, there are some significant costs that are associated with this. And that means we're either going to have to hire more people and expend money on software and hardware and location, and staffing that particular location. Where, do you foresee being able to shift any personnel at this point? As you mentioned, you know, calls come into your office, but I mean, it's, I want to look into it, but I just want to know where we're going with this, because we have a bare bones budget, and this, as you can see from other municipalities, there are some significant expenses associated with.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the, to the council. You know, we'll certainly come back with some budget, more specific budget projection for this. There is a bare bones budget right now. We don't have personnel that we could dedicate to a 311, 311 center. But that's, doesn't mean we couldn't come back and tell you what it would be, you know, the requisite cost to operate an effective 311 line. You know, Somerville was put out as an example, because they do have a fully-staffed office for 311. I think not only staffing, but as Councilor Noon mentions, there may be language issues, so you'd need people who could interpret and who are answering the, the phone calls. So that would mean a staff that, that has ability in, in more than one language. So we will, we will certainly look into it and put together a budget proposal for the council to consider. As far as community compact agreements, the governor, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito entered into community compact agreements with, with almost every community, I think, in, in the Commonwealth at this point. It's been over there four years, and monies were given. And the city or town decided how to use it. I was just inquiring, as Lowell had a community compact agreement with the governor and with Lieutenant Governor. But I think the money was used for energy costs when, when the money was awarded. So each community decides what to use it for. So we did put in the report some examples of communities that used it in connection with either planning for a 311 or center. So, but we can get a more detailed idea for the council, what it would cost. In the current budget, there is no, there is no money that would be available immediately to establish a 311, I say center, but line, with the staffing that would, in order for it to be effective.
No. And, and again, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, because when you see, this graphic is a reminder of somewhat of the challenges when people do have an issue, whether it's traffic or tree lights. I mean, I saw a street light out the other day, a traffic light, and I actually thought to myself, who, who would I call? And if it was as easy as 311, then it would have been solved. About, you know, we talk about nuisances of trash, holes, being able to pick up the phone. And that's, and sometimes departments just don't know, because there is a significant magnitude to this. So I don't want to start at no, but, you know, how can we try to, you know, implement this with, with minimal cost?
And, and I certainly understand, you know, the point that not everybody has technology that they can go online or follows Twitter or even knows how to follow it. But certainly, they can always call the manager's office, and we do the best we can to, even if there is a language issue, to try and deal with it. But, but we will get a more detailed report for the council. So looking forward, you'd have a better perspective of what it would cost the city to establish a 311.
Right. And the city of Boston has an app. They have an app for those, you know, smartphone users. But as was mentioned, not everybody has them. So, and it's very effective, but, I mean, different strategies for, for different folks. Okay.
Thank you for the report, Madam Manager. Councilor Mercia on Domino's paving grant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a little bit mistaken when I asked through the motion to have the Commissioner of DPW request to apply for this grant. It isn't the DPW Commissioner. It's actually a little bit of a campaign, and I'm directing this to you, Rick, from the Sun, because I think you can help us out with this. This is a campaign that asks individual- This is a campaign that asks individuals to go to www.pavingforpizza.com. Now, this is a motion that can get the whole community involved. And what can I do for my city? This is what you can do for your city. This is what you can do for your city guys behind me, right? Because I know you're going to do it, because these are the guys and the gals that'll do it. Yes, well, we're not out, you can eat pizza, but we want to fill those potholes. And you go to that website, and you nominate your city, and you put in your zip code, you click on to nominate your town. It's a red square at the top. It's because I already voted myself. I'm not going to ask people to vote if I don't vote myself. So, I put my zip code in, you click, and then you have to put in your email address, you enter your zip code, and then you check off the terms of condition. It's as simple as that. And I think if they hear from a lot of us, we'll get the $5,000. It's not a lot of money, but every bit counts, and every citizen in this city can make a difference. I think that's a good campaign. So, if we could put it on our website, if we can have Rick from the Sun put this in there as a little blip or something, people might, what can I do with my time today? You can do a good deed and try to help us get some potholes filled. And we're all playing a part in our role to make our city better. So, thank you very much in advance to all those that want to contribute to filling those potholes, so the pizza can deliver, be delivered without going in any ruts. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Manager.
Thank you. And we did discuss this, and we'll put it on our website, in Facebook, and Twitter, and as well as, I think, Henry Marchand's mailing list. He will also put it out to his list of contacts.
Okay. Counselor Kennedy, did you have? No, I'll say, okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. All right, next, we have the downed wire ordinance by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Leahy, do you want to talk on that?
Sure, thank you. Through you to the city solicitor. Could you just give an overview of this? Are you basically saying we can, or we have to do it with some petitions?
Sure. The, as set forth in the opinion, there were other communities in Massachusetts that have pursued your attempt to regulate these downed wires and other issues pertaining to utility companies. However, the SJC has ruled that state law has essentially preempted any local action with respect to the regulation of utilities, and that local ordinances, therefore, are essentially prohibited in almost every respect. To that end, other communities have petitioned the legislature for home rule amendments to provide them the ability to better regulate and monitor things like downed wires, as well as double poles, and these efforts have stalled. And so, as a result of that review, the conclusion of the law department was that this would, we held very little hope that these efforts would be successful.
Okay. So, my question is, you know, it seems to be the norm now that either the telephone or the cable companies leave their wires hanging. So, what happens when one day an electrical wire falls? And, well, we just assume it's, you know, not a dangerous wire. And then what happens? You know? I mean, that's what the issue is here. We shouldn't have wires hanging down from telephone poles off of houses. So, we need to do something as a city. I mean, because one day, there's going to be a dangerous wire hanging down.
Right.
So, that's, you know, how we need to do something about this. And I know that, I don't know, we just need to work with these two companies to have them understand that you shouldn't be leaving wires hanging down across the city. And, you know, it's really not, it's everybody's job once you see it to call it in. Because there's numerous ones in my neighborhood, I'm sure they're all across the city, but it's too much for one person to go around and count them all. But someone should be doing that. So, back to you, back to you, the Madam Mayor, Mayor, Manager. Someone should be responsible, a lot of Department of Public Works, to report these, and there should be a timeline on what's there.
And as the solicitor pointed out, unfortunately, you know, there is the law of the Supreme Circuit. Many towns file for a home rule petition, and they just get sent to a study or committee, primarily because the law of the SJC. But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, complain and badger, strike that, communicate with the utility companies over and over about that. So, I think we have to continue, you know, we could file a home rule petition, but, you know, the likelihood of anything happening is slim to none based on the law. So, I think what we need to do is just be very proactive with the utility companies and just continue to, you know, communicate with them on a regular basis when there are issues like that. So, yeah, it's going to require setting up an inventory, a list of the problem poles, and just, whether it's grid or any of the other utilities who are at fault.
Yeah. All right. If we could just make some sort of a conservative, an effort to have department heads or departments, whether it's parks or DPW, when you're out there and you see a wire, just mark down the pole, submit it to your department head, and then, you know.
We're going to have a department head meeting tomorrow morning, so we'll make sure we put that out on the.
I mean, I know there's one, two poles down from your house. It's been sitting there for months.
And behind my house, there was Comcast, too.
Oh, behind. Sure. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Noon, then, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Counselor Leahy has been a strong, you know, take a strong position on double pole and double Y, I mean, downed Y. It's rightfully so. It's the safety issues. You don't want to wait until something really happens, someone end up really seriously hurt, and to say, let's do something about it. And he'd been from the get-go on these issues. I think the legislatures may not have the appetite for it, but we need to continue to push them. Maybe there need to be a home rule petition filed, urge our legislature to do that, you know, and to otherwise be responsible for us as an elected official. The other things, too, that proactive, I like that word a lot, Madam Manager, but the utility company don't understand the word proactive. They not, they've been really, really difficult to work with, particularly with the double pole. I was on a council in 2012, 13, and Counselor Leahy brought these double pole issues since then, and till now. And they've done nothing. Every time they come, National Grid especially, come before, and one more pole, but then again, those double pole keep add up. And there need to be something done with them. So, it's frustrating. I know Counselor Leahy probably even more frustrated than I am, but something need to be done, whether we need to file, urge our legislature to file a home rule petition, do so, and again, continue to work with National Grid, but not with strong language with them, so that they do something about, because this is safety. Safety issues for our, I mean, some of these wire that down, it may be alive, can hurt people, young people, or whatnot. So, I thank you, Counselor Leahy.
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the report indicates that a number of communities have filed a home rule petition. I mean, I personally think that we should for this reason. And maybe it's going to be sent to the subcommittee or the Committee on Utilities and Energy and Technology. But if we do nothing and just not go on record, if you will, with Haverhill and Watertown and a growing list of communities, and it was even in the Governor's municipal modernization bill, and was taken out, and I, while our chances may be slim, I still think that we should put forth the effort and at least show our support that this is a problem, and join, hopefully, a growing list of communities, that the message will continue to be heard, that, you know, LOL's going to join these communities to do something. So, I mean, I'm not the maker of the motion, but I would, I would support and put forth a motion that we pursue a home rule petition to join the other communities in this effort. And if it goes to the study, you know, to the committee and it dies there, I understand, but I think that it's worth the effort to move forward and show support that we should be joining this group.
Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the downed wires is probably similar to the double poles, as Counselor Noon mentioned. And really, what happens with that is that there's a large amount of double poles, and then, when National Grid comes in here, for whatever reason, we complain about the double poles, and then, the number of double poles is reduced, but never eliminated, and then it builds up again, and it kind of goes like that. It's almost like a tide type of thing, where it goes in and goes out, and the number of poles goes up and goes down. And I suspect the same thing could happen with this. But I think that rather than, if we had just filed a home rule petition on double poles, that would just be lumped in with everybody else. And I think we all get periodicals from Beacon Hill, that we get the Beacon, and they talk about double poles. And I can remember during the time that I was mayor, having a discussion with Governor Baker about double poles. And he remembered, I think it was actually at a St. Patrick's Day dinner, but he remembered his time when he was a selectman in Swambsgate, and double poles were an issue then. So, and there's been several bills that have been filed, nothing ever gets done with it. And so, my suggestion would be that we compile a list, not of 300 downed wires, but maybe 20 or 30, and see how we do with those. And then, if we're successful with those, then give them another list of more, and go on like that. And that that might be a better strategy, rather than to file a home rule petition, which is probably going to go nowhere. If instead, nothing happens with that strategy, that would be a time where, as a last resort, I think you would file a home rule petition. But again, as the city manager has pointed out, that's been done several times by several communities to absolutely no avail.
Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, this, if I recall, this was never a problem before, these hanging wires. I don't ever remember it. What has changed that all of a sudden, they, you know, and again, I see the frustration, all over the city, they're just hanging. And number one, the whole idea of a safety issue, obviously, and the other thing is, they look terrible. And I don't know if this is illegal, but I'm just going to throw it up on the table here. Can they, after a period of time that we notify them about specific areas, you know, as Counselor Kennedy just said, you know, let's say, put forward 10, 20, or 30, or 50, after a period of doing this, maybe three or four times, and notices, can we, can we, not necessarily sue them, but can we put some type of a cost on it? We charge them for it?
So, I'll turn this over to the solicitor, who has the legal research that she did on this, and it appears that we would be preempted by state law, but I will turn it back to the solicitor.
I'm thinking of perhaps a fine for them?
Right. I think the same, Madam Solicitor, if you want to address that.
Sure. That is, as the manager was indicating, the, we would be preempted from instituting fines against them.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Kennedy.
Just to, you know, just to answer Counselor Conway's question, I think that, I think it was the winter, and the type of winter that we had, and the type of storms that we had, which caused a lot of wires to go down. And I think that they've just never been, I had one in front of my house down, I don't know how long it was down, it's not down now, but I would imagine that there's still a lot of stragglers out there, and wires that have just never been, nobody's ever gone to pick them up, for whatever reason. Maybe they don't even know they're down. But I think that was the cause of it, and I think that's why the problem is somewhat unique right now, is because of the type of winter and the type of storms that we had this winter compared to previous winters.
Any further discussion? Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I just, you know, for whatever reason, they know that they're doing it. It's just easier when they have a disconnect or whatever to leave the wire hanging. And it's a safe, it's more of a safety issue than a nuisance, but it is a nuisance. Someone's going to get hurt. You know, you can see kids running them across the road, someone's, it's going to create car accidents, whatever. They're just, it's dangerous. So, it's more than nuisance with the double poles. That's why I would think we would have more of a leg to stand on. So, if we could just take a look at it from a safety issue, you know, that's the real thing here, because God forbid that live wire be down one day, or someone run it across the road, and someone gets choked, or at night, or something, but it's a safety issue more than a nuisance. So, whatever we can do, you know, we can just, we can play nice on this, too. We can just bring someone in and drive them around the city and show them the heavy concentrated areas of the city that they have. You know? We can go about it either way, so, thank you.
You have a response?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree. It certainly is much more than just a nuisance issue, and communities have attempted to do that with respect to both double poles, as well as the downed wires. However, we can, we can continue to look at this issue and reach out to some of the communities that have done this, to see if, what their thoughts are. Maybe we can sort of join together and get a bit of a coalition to move forward. But we can continue to look at this issue, particularly in light of the safety issue that it poses for the neighborhoods.
Next, we have Merrill Drive, parents, I'm sorry.
I had put a motion on the floor, and I don't know if it was clear or not, if there was a second, but I just want to reiterate, if we don't want to do a home rule petition, there's a reason why so many other communities are doing that, is because we're being, because communities are being ignored. And we can work with them, and, you know, it's like paddling upstream with double poles, understanding that, you know, bills go into, the bills die anyway, so I'm not sure what the maker of the motion wants to do. I did make the motion, but I just think it's worth getting on record, that's all.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Leahy.
And at the same time, yeah, put together a list and try to willow that number down, but, you know, they come here, and we have conversations with them, and we're upset, and then they do just a little, same thing with the wires. There should be a fine, and in order to fine them, if you want to hit them in the pocketbook, which is one of the few, one of the ways people, you know, corporations respond, then the way to do that is to get a bill filed, so we do have the ability to do that right now. We can't do anything.
Understood, Counselor Malazza.
Thank you. I'm also going to request that city manager reach out to Representative Golden, who I believe is the chair of the Technology and Energy Committee. So, and again, he might be willing to co-host a drive-by or drive-around to look at where these poles are, but I'll certainly support the idea of moving forward with the home rule petition. But I do think reaching out to Representative Golden is probably a good idea.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Clerk, just read the motion, too.
It's a motion by Counselor Elliott to pursue a home rule petition regarding hanging wires. Seconded by Counselor Leahy.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, back to Merrill Drive by Counselor Cirillo.
Hi, yes, there is an update by the city manager.
Yes, thank you. There was, or still appears to be a vote on tonight for the 60-day trial. However, that has to be postponed. There was a drafting error by the Engineers Department that has to be corrected, and it can't be, in order to be accurate, we need to correct it and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. But in the meantime, there was another issue that Counselor Cirillo brought to my attention today about ongoing problems with that, that perhaps the 60-day trial will not in and of itself address, and it has to do with commercial vehicles coming from the top of Merrill down, trying to enter onto Route 38, vehicles that are too big for the street, school buses, even school buses containing children. And there was one that was stuck on the street for a half hour because it was too big to travel down the street. So, I, it's my understanding that maybe it's fortuitous that this is going to, there's going to be a request to amend it, to not just have the sign, do not enter on Nesmith Street on Route 38, but also. Street, on Route 38," but also a "No Commercial Vehicle" at the top of the street.
That's correct.
Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. It was a flatbed truck that was dragging, that was towing another car behind it, going down Merrill, and it took a half hour for it to actually get down the road, and it stopped all the traffic. And also, just tonight, I received photos that the person that I've been speaking with on Merrill Drive, a truck came, was coming down, and actually ended up in his yard, hitting the, hitting some of his rocks, and then backing up and hitting the neighbor's tree, and now there are limbs down in the street, and the truck just took off and left. And so, there is, there is, there is a big issue with commercial vehicles going down this, this street, that really almost looks like a driveway, and it's inappropriate, and also, the school buses that are trying to get down there are filled with children, I'd be nervous for the children myself, so I think that this is a good plan, I think that we need the "No Commercial Vehicles" sign at the top, and the "Do Not Enter One Way" at the bottom, so I think, as much as I'd love to see this happen tonight, I'm glad that we can actually get that "No Commercial Vehicles" at the top of Merrill. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yeah, that might be the steepest street in the city, and it's really just sort of a one-lane street, and I don't know why school buses would be coming down there, because it's just, it's very, very steep. But also, with the commercial vehicles, where are they coming from, that they would need to take that street? It's just, I don't know. So anyways, I think it's a good motion, it's good, will be good to have it on in two weeks. But in the meantime, Mr. Mayor, I would try to find out why the heck school buses have to get on that street. That's, as Counsel Cirillo pointed out, that's just, that's a bad idea.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy.
Just one comment on that, too, is that, I mean, I think that the school department is so messed up right now, that they don't have a transportation coordinator who would tell them not to use those streets. So I agree, I mean, I don't know why buses are going down there, I don't know why commercial vehicles would be even in that neighborhood, going down there, but until the school department comes up with a coordinator, traffic, or a bus coordinator, we're going to have that problem.
We'll check that out, thank you. All set on that issue? We have now Plug-in America, Counsel Elliott, do you have any?
No, it's a good report. It would be good to understand how we can cut back, I mean, on some of these costs, and whether we could get sponsors to offset some of these costs. It's just a small, a group of folks that meet, who came up with a very good idea, in my opinion, and I understand, you know, $2,800, it's a small amount, but it'll still need to be raised, so if, as the memo does mention, if there are way to cut back on some of these costs, I think that would be great. I know the individual that was here couldn't make it, he had a medical, medical appointment, so I don't know if he wanted to speak, if that's okay, I suppose suspend the rules to allow.
Yeah, this is a grassroots kind of event.
Okay, name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Case, 141 John Street. And the idea is that it is based on local car owners, electric car owners, who gather and meet with other people who might be interested in owning a car, or who already own them, and talk about, you know, the pleasures of driving an electric car, and the environmental wisdom of driving an electric car. Right now, only 1% of the cars on the road are electric, and the whole concept, too, is to build that, to build that interest, and to build the market, and hopefully it will grow. So we have a citizen committee, there are four of us now, one member is on the Sustainability Council, one of the members is with the Plug-in America, which is also National Drive Electric Week, and I'm with the Sierra Club. We're meeting every week, we have a plan, as soon as we get approval from the city, and a budget, we're all ready to go, we have a list of possible donors, so we're ready to go with fundraising, and we have a preliminary figure, I'm sure it'll be a little higher than that, we will plan for that, and that's it.
You all set, Counsel Elliott?
I was trying to plan for a little bit lower.
Okay.
And Counsel Henry Marchand is here, and his office has indicated, in the report, and in discussion, would work to try and minimize cost as much as possible with the organization.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that, and right away, as soon as possible, we will start meeting with Case to try to work out the details, yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Next, we have municipal vulnerability preparedness, Counsel Elliott.
Thank you. Again, this is a good report regarding municipal vulnerability program offered through the state to, to set, to allow communities to apply for money, and funding for the Plan for Resiliency and implementation of key climate change and adaptation plan. The good news out of this report is that we can work with NEMCOG, and we are a FEMA, we already have a FEMA mitigation hazard plan, hazard mitigation plan, so, and NEMCOG is trained and certified to update and be able to apply for the MVP, so I think this is great news, that anywhere from $10,000 to $400,000, that's being made available to communities, and I know the application is not for a while, but this is what planning is all about, to put an application, or plan, to get something in for next April, and hopefully be awarded, so it's a good report, I don't know, do we need a vote to proceed, or is through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, or what is, what is the next step?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counsel, and answering Counsel Elliott's question, I don't believe that a vote is required. Diane Trad is here, who prepared the report, that it is the intent of planning and development to pursue the grant opportunities here for, for, you know, forward thinking and planning in terms of the municipal preparedness, and so that is the plan, to have one in place and ready in a timely manner, and working with NEMCOG as well, is that correct, Diane?
Yes. And I think, you know, it's, there's one, there's one bullet here, I think is important, because this grant helps to define extreme weather and natural and climate-related hazards, and Lord knows that we have seen those swings in the impact that it has, certainly with floods, and we do have two major rivers and dams, so I do think it's important, and I'm pleased, thank you for the report, and pleased to hear that, we're going to, we will be proceeded. We have a designee from the council on NEMCOG, Mr. Mayor, I know.
Counsel Kennedy.
Oh, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All set? Okay. I need a motion to accept and place these motions in file.
So moved.
By Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Noon.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Could I just suspend the rules for a minute, to ask for an update on a motion that was put on last week, about the school department?
Second.
I just, I had that motion on prior meeting, about the update for TV studio, and in light of, that the superintendent may be gone this week, do we have any update on what we're trying to do? I mean, I don't want to see these people that are unemployed right now left, go and find other jobs, and then, I think that'd have a devastating effect on.
For the record, that's on the agenda for the school committee, a week from this coming Wednesday.
All right, so if you have no superintendent, you're still going to discuss it, and try to find a solution?
Superintendent will be present that day.
Well, if he leaves Thursday, he's not going to be there, is he?
No, no, a week from, next Wednesday, I'm sorry, a week from next Wednesday.
Right, I heard he might be gone by Thursday, if he accepts a new job.
I don't think so.
All right, but I do, I mean, this is very important, obviously, and I just want to make sure that that gets resolved as soon as possible, so if you can provide us some sort of an update in between, that'd be great.
There's a number of issues that have been raised, and will be.
I know, there's a lot.
Will be addressed.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we have motion, the Communication 3.2 has been withdrawn, we have Communication 3.3, communication appoint David J. Cunningham to Water Board, I need a motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Mercia. Is Counsel, is Mr. Cunningham here?
Mr. Mayor, no, we did receive communication from Mr. Cunningham, he was unable to attend, but very happy to accept the appointment.
Thank you. Next, we have communication to appoint Straffpo Caldwell to the Sustainability Council, I need a motion to adopt.
Moved to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Is Caldwell here? Okay, I need a roll call for us, roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milanozo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Oh, yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years. Would you like to come up and say hello? Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you so much, everyone. When I joined the Lowell Summit three years ago at Enterprise Bank, I fell in love with the Sustainability Committee, so I went on their meetings, and thank you so much for this opportunity, for joining in a team that is going to look for ways to affect our youth in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause).
Now, we have 3.5, communication appoint Touche Van to the Hunger Homeless Commission, and your motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Touche Van was here, yes, would you like to come up, sir? Introduce yourself, congratulations.
Well, thank you, the mayor, thank you, the council, the city manager, those three that you are appointing me, I'm Touche Van, I live in Lowell, and working in Lowell for Cambodian Association, and also Mental Health Association here, and I'm looking forward to work with the other commissioners to serve our communities, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have 3.6, communication reappoint Louisa Von and Caitlin Bearden to Conservation Commission, I need a motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. Okay, we're all set with that. Then 3.7, city manager requests out of state travel, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion, roll call?
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milanozo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
All right, then we have votes from the city manager, vote to accept the Mass General Law Chapter 59, a program for reduced property tax for veterans or spouses in exchange for volunteer service. I need a motion to refer to public hearing on July 24, 2018, at 7:00 P.M.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Conway. Next, we have 4.2, vote authorized city manager execute access license agreement to 175 Woolard and 271 Humphrey Street Grand Manor Association, waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute an access license agreement for Grand Manor Association Inc. for the purpose of entering into the property at 175 Woolard, 271 Humphrey Street Lowell, in order to conduct environmental activities and remedial work on said property, and performing and completing the work pursuant to the terms and conditions of the license agreement, in accordance with applicable law and scope for services. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Milanozo, a roll call. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milanozo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years. All right, next we have vote authorized city manager execute lease with Daily Group LLC, 60 Carlisle Street, Chelmsford, Mass., for three years, waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the school department to proceed under the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 30B for the leased property of the Daily Group LLC, located at 60 Carlisle Street, Chelmsford, Mass. Need a motion to accept.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Mercia.
Yes, I have a question. This is the 60 Carlisle Street, and I believe that the children with autism, they go out of the city, or we led to believe they go out of the city?
Yes.
Do we have a cost on what we pay to have them go out of the city, as compared to what we're paying for the three years, or yearly, or whatever? Do we have a difference in price? Like, are we saving money doing this? Because I thought that the purpose of this was to save money, to have, and please understand, I'm not, I'm not against children with autism, I have a grandson that has Asperger's Syndrome, doesn't live in the city, but I understand, and I'm sympathetic to that, but I wanted to know, are we saving something by doing this? Because I was under the impression we were. Do we know any figures here?
Madam Manager.
So, so, through you, to the council, so it's currently the school that the children attend is in Methuen, and the lease was put out to bid for, because that property was sold, and there were responsive bids, but only one that met the criteria, and this is the one, and also, is my understanding that it's on the Lowell line, and so, the cost, you know, we don't have that, we can ask the school department for that, they, for the transportation cost?
We will get that cost.
We get that information?
Yes.
Not that I'm against it, I would never be against that, but I just, and I'd rather they be in Lowell than be transported out of the city. I just thought we were, it was a cost-saving measure as well, but I don't know that, so...
We will get the information. I know they won't be transported to Methuen any longer, and just to the Lowell-Chelmsford line, but we will, we can get the transportation cost.
Thank you.
Counsel Milanozo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, either through the manager or to the solicitor, the vote actually talks about authorizing the city manager to execute the lease, but that's not what the document says. The document is saying the school department will proceed under Mass. General Law Chapter 30B, so you're not, we're not signing the lease on the city side, the school department's signing the lease, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Madam Solicitor.
Correct. This was, this was something that was solicited by the school department.
Right, and it's coming out of their side of the budget. It's coming out of their side of the budget, correct?
Correct, and, right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Counsel Elliott, and Counsel Leahy.
Just to follow up, but it's the council that has to authorize this, the school department can't obligate, it's the council, that's why it's before us.
Correct.
Can I just ask a follow-up? So this is just a lease?
The solicitor could address.
I was just going to add, simply because we're dealing with real property, the council has exclusive jurisdiction.
Right. And just to follow up to you, Madam Manager, so we're going to lease this property, are we also going to operate the program? Because my understanding, the Methuen agreement was, was the whole Kit and Kaboodle meeting, we, we sent our students there, and they were educated there. This says leasing the property, and are we going to be?
We will, it will be asked of, yes.
Okay, so that is the intent, to save money, rather than send our students to a school and pay for that entire cost, we're leasing, and we're setting up our own program, program in order to save costs. We're, I think we're looking at the Elks building at one time, one point in time, but that's no longer feasible, and this is why we're going to the next one, because it didn't meet the criteria. Okay, great.
Correct. Counsel Kennedy.
If I could, just in answer to Counsel Mercia's question, this will result in a savings, but not as substantial as, for instance, the Elks would have been. It's not, it's not complete, it's just, it's because, it's because the building in Methuen got sold, and when it got sold, then the lease got terminated, and so they needed another place to go. So I think for the out-of-district students, last year, the budget was like 17, over $17 million, and I think this year, the amount budgeted, Mr. Mayor, I think is a little bit over $12 million, so there's some savings.
Right. We will get that information provided to you. Counsel Leahy.
So when we lease this, are we responsible for repairs, do you know? Are we maintaining this building, too?
I don't believe so, in the contract, I don't believe that's.
Just a lease, and we're going to run the program?
Roll call.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years.
All right, then, next, 4.4, vote authorize city manager execute permanent and temporary easement from trustees of Keith Academy condominium trust. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents pertaining to the Thontake Street road widening and sidewalk improvement project related to the permanent and temporary easements from the trustees of Keith Academy condominium trust. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, second by Council Milonazo. Roll call. Our discussion, any discussion? Roll call.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years.
Okay, 4.5, we took out of order, we're now at 4.6. Vote authorize city manager to execute sidewalk seating license agreement with the holding LLC Ida Bar 74 to 76 Merrimack Street. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute license agreement between the City of Lowell City and the LD Holding Company LLC, Ida Bar 74, for use portion of city property adjacent to the premises at 76 Merrimack Street Lowell for the purpose of sidewalk seating. I need a motion to adopt. By Council Elliott.
Second.
Second by Council Noon. Any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. We have Mr. Slagel and the Chief Webb here to speak to this issue. This was not approved, and we're not requesting approval, but Mr. Slagel, if you could address what happened.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In the normal course of business, the Development Services Office receives requests for sidewalk seating approval. As the council knows, they do have to come before the council, but prior to that, the information is dispersed to the various departments around the city to see if there are any departmental concerns regarding a particular sidewalk seating for, for any particular reason. In this case, the Lowell Police Department had sent back a negative recommendation, and we informed the business owner that the Lowell Police Department had given them a negative recommendation, and they, they did request that it come before the council nonetheless. As to the specifics of the Lowell Police Department's concerns, I would, I'll leave that to Superintendent Webb.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to be brief, but if you could be with me, I'd like to present some history concerning this application. I first objected to this application in May of 2017. At that time, due to five-day suspension that had been imposed on the licensee in April of 2017 by the License Commission for failing to maintain order and failing to notify the License Commission of a police response to the premises. At that time, I questioned the management's ability or willingness to conform to establish regulations. Since that denial in 2017, the License Commission at a public hearing saw fit to roll back the hours of operation to a 1:00 a.m. closing from June 2, 2017, to July 13, 2017. After that, in March of this year, the License Commission imposed a one-day suspension on the licensee for violation of entertainment hours. In April of 2018, the lack of a manager of record at the licensee became an issue. There was an individual in April whose name was submitted to be the new manager. He lasted for about a month, and he called me and informed me that he wished to withdraw his name from being considered as a license, the manager of record because of, I'll say, activities and business practices that he observed at the licensed premises. In May of 2018, the License Commission imposed a 10-day suspension on the licensee for failure to display a liquor license and failure to submit the name of a manager of record. It's my understanding that this suspension is currently before the Alcohol Beverage Control On June 5 of this year, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission imposed a one-day suspension on the licensee as a result of a person under 21 years old being found in possession of alcoholic beverages on the premises. On June 7, I objected to this year's application for sidewalk seating application, because at that time, for the above violations, the fact that there was no manager of record, and the proposed seating area extended beyond the front edge of the restaurant, it actually extends in front of the stairway to the, to the next door premises, which is actually another liquor license that is owned by the same ownership. And I think it's relevant to discuss the other liquor license that, that this owner also has. In addition to Bar 74, this owner also has a license for a club known as Revolution, which is next door to Bar 74 and in the, the two stories above that. And not to go through, again, every violation that that licensee has had, but the License Commission has imposed eight days' suspension on Revolution over the past 15 months. And also of note, on June 5 of this year, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission imposed a 74-day suspension on Revolution with 22 days to serve, as a result of an operation that was conducted by the ABCC and Lowell Police in February of this year that found 22 underage drinkers on the premises. So because of the violations at the applicant's premises and the applicant's other premises that are right next door, I still question the applicant's ability or willingness to comply with any regulations, and I urge you to deny this application.
Thank you for your work, Chief. Council Milonazo.
I'd like to put forward a motion to deny.
Second.
Second by Council Leahy.
And if I could speak on that, I actually was going to object to the second reading tonight, but then when I saw interim superintendent here, I thought that's why he was here to talk about this. I wanted to give him an opportunity, because the city and the city council should not be rewarding chronic, chronic bad behavior. So I certainly appreciate the interim chief being here and Eric Slagel being here, but again, I, I would encourage my colleagues to vote to deny. Thank you.
Council Conway, Council Noon, then Council Elliott.
I certainly agree that, that this should be denied. The question I have, and I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question right now, but how are these establishments still open? How are they allowed to be still open? I mean, I just listened to the chief talk about the, the history of these, of these, of these establishments, and yet we still allow them to be in our city?
We have the attorney from that company. You want the attorney to speak for us? Can you continue, or do you want?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the, what the procedure would be.
No, it's, it's up to you. You can, you have the floor.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious on why.
If you want to listen to...
Sure, absolutely.
Get more information.
I'd be very happy to listen to an attorney.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Attorney Travis Jacobs, I represent LD Holdings. I've represented them for a number of years now. It seems to me, since I've represented this client for, since 2017, that the word is out in Lowell, let's attack this 100% women-owned business and shut it down.
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is way, this is way out of order. I object.
No, excuse me, I was, allow me, allow me. No, no, look, this is not going to be, if you have the case, just present information. That's all I'm asking.
I'm happy to.
I don't, we don't need dialogue, we don't need to go somewhere else.
We just had five minutes of dialogue about things that have happened in the past.
It was fact, what he did.
Sure.
He gave fact, that's all I'm looking for.
Fact.
Yes.
Within one day of this licensee picking up the paper license from City Hall, the chairman of the License Committee reported dirty bottles from an unknown informant and contacted the Lowell Police Department and the building inspector to have them check it out. The very next day, a routine inspection was performed, and they found dusty bottles and a handful of other violations, including the fact, paper violations. These are facts, where the license...
Hold it. It's Council...
Mayor, this isn't a public hearing.
That's right.
Council Conway has the floor. If Council Conway wants to ask questions, that's one thing, but it's just to give it, make it turn into an open forum is out of line.
The thing is, I was going to allow the, the lawyer to make a statement. He's gone beyond that. And the thing is, you're there, you can, if Council Conway wants to ask you questions, that's where we are at this point. That's it.
Well, the license...
Council Conway has the floor.
I do not want to ask any questions of the attorney.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Will the licensee be able to respond any further?
No. If, if another council has a question, you'll be asked that question. Thank you. Any further questions of this attorney? No. Any further statements?
I don't have a question for the attorney, Mayor. I second Counselor Elliott, because usual establishment that conform, comply with city licensings and whatnot, come before the board and asking for a sidewalk sitting. This is not the usual one, where you have the chief of police reported that he was present in a number of occasion, the habitual in complying with the city license commissioned and the recommendation that they put forth. And not only that, but also a number of suspension, as chief indicated. Therefore, I rescind my second, and I know Counselor Elliott have done, did the same. I, I can't support this, because Counselor Milonazo is correct. You do not award someone who's not complying with the city.
So Counsel Elliott, you withdraw your motion.
I seconded Counsel Milonazo, so...
Yeah, you seconded Counsel Milonazo.
But he made a substitute, counsel, I believe Counsel Milonazo made a substitute motion to deny, which was seconded.
Yes, right. Counsel, if you want to speak on point, you may speak, but if you're going to go into theatrics, it's over. You can speak on point. Do you wish to speak on point?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I think you understand what I'm saying, correct?
I do.
Thank you.
So initially, the report from the city for the denial of this license was the, Mr. Webb, Captain Webb's...
Superintendent Webb.
Negative recommendation to issue the license, the outdoor seating license. That was in May of 2017. In May of 2017, none of this other stuff that he had discussed had happened. So why did the recommendation get issued that soon? This licensee only had the license as of March 1st. So March, April, May, and it's being recommended not to have it. The liquor license itself allows the outdoor seating. It has already been approved by the License Committee on the liquor license, on the entertainment license, and on the common VIC license. Every aspect of the application process was performed in compliance by the licensee. Despite that, the initial denial was not, in 2018, June of 2018, the denial was not all of these things that Captain Webb mentioned. The denial was because the proposed area was outside the footprint of what is allowed. But the application here is identical to the application submitted and approved by two prior owners and licensees of this location. Not just the previous one, but the one before that too, with the same fencing, the same tables, the same umbrella, the same chairs. What about this footprint, which is exactly the same, is any different? Also, this licensee is not any different than any other licensees except for one thing. Other licensees who have had violations don't have their outdoor seating revoked. Another licensee down the street had an owner dealing drugs in the bar. That outdoor seating was not revoked. Just within the last year, they also had overcrowding. Two underage people, one hospitalized, no revocation of their outdoor seating. A bar up the street had a stabbing, no revocation of their outdoor seating. You have none of those issues here. The two prior licensees were involved in physical altercations themselves, themselves and their bouncers. The violations here are none of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This is, this discussion is within the realm of the License Commission. When we're making allegations against other bars, we are, we are presented with information from the chief of police on the multiple allegations on the operation and management, and that's the basis for us to make a decision whether we should allow outdoor seating or not. In my opinion, it's been grossly mismanaged. The License Commission has taken significant measures, and I think the eight, the 74 days should be implemented myself, based upon what has taken place with 22 underage individuals in that place. So this, that discussion belongs with the License Commission. This is about an outdoor seating permit. I move the question.
So moved. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call on the substitute motion, please, Mr. Mayor.
Council Mercia.
This is on moving the question, correct? Is this on moving the question, or is this on the actual vote?
This is on the actual motion.
Okay.
Motion to deny.
To deny.
Council Mercia.
Motion to deny, yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Nine years, denied.
Council Elliott, you are correct. I was just listening to the city solicitor to give him the talking point, but he just refused to talk on point, and you're correct. Thank you. All right, next, we have, audits from the city manager, 5.1. Have you withdrawn that, the 60-day trial?
Yes, that's, that's withdrawn, and we will put it back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have report of the subcommittee, the rules subcommittee. I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress.
Okay, I'll just give the brief report. Mr. Mayor, the rules subcommittee met this evening in response to a couple, two motions that had been sent to the rules subcommittee relative to the protests that took place a number of weeks ago, right here in the city council chamber. Motion was to look at, well, two issues, the quorum in the chamber, as well as a free speech zone or a free speech area. We listened to his testimony from the city solicitor on a report that was presented by the solicitor and the city manager's office relative to amending Rule 26. Many of the, we do have a provisions in Rule 26 that govern meetings, open meeting, excuse me, meetings that open to the public, and so there was language that was included to expand, if you will, the Robert's Rules. We do adopt Robert's Rules, but it's recommended that we get a little bit more specific, which, with what is allowed and what is not allowed at the council meeting itself, particularly as it relates to signs, placards, banners, cheering, booing, et cetera. And that language is included, so the recommendation is to amend Rule 26 to include additional provisions to preserve the quorum in the chamber, I can say generally. And by the way, the mayor was also in attendance, as well as Counsel Leahy. But the gist of, of this language is, we want to be able to conduct business for the public and, and the people's house, and in order to do that, we need to ensure that we have guidelines in place. There is no opposition at all whatsoever with people protesting or expressing their First Amendment rights, but there's a place, and there's, there's a time and a place, if you will, and it's not right here within the council chamber. So that's one issue. The second issue of a free speech zone, and the subcommittee didn't like the term zone, there was discussion from all members of the subcommittee that on more than one occasion, right outside City Hall, there have been numerous protests, and that is, that's what And that is, that's what we support. People should be able to protest no matter what it is, and again, just the location. And so rather than create a zone, we've asked the solicitor to, so this was the second motion, and we can perhaps take them together, Mr. Mayor. The second was just to refer that issue of creating a free speech area or a protest, a protest area, designate a protest area, one of the two. Zone just seemed to be a word that was restricted, and that's not the intent. You know, the spirit of the rule change is just to ensure that we can conduct business in a manner, and people can participate on either side and express themselves, but also allow a place, if you will, outside, outside of City Hall for folks to be able to protest or express their opinion. So that's the motion to adopt the provisions of decorum inside this chamber and as well, and to have the city solicitor research more and come back with a little bit more definitive direction on how to ensure people can protest.
Good report. Any further discussions on this, on this issue? All right, any motion to accept?
So just by way of process, Mr. Mayor, the solicitor will draft information. It will not go back. The first section, it's not an ordinance, it's a rule. It has to come to this body and publicly advertise and then, and then vote, correct? No.
No advertising.
No, excuse me, not advertised, posted, part of the agenda, right. Not advertised. So that's, that's the report with those, with those motions.
Motion to accept.
Right.
Report of progress by Counsel Mersey, seconded by Counsel Kennedy.
No.
I'm sorry.
What I wanted to know is, will we get specifically what that language is? What is that language about the decorum in the chamber? And how is that going to be enforced? Was there? I didn't get that out of the report.
Oh, it's the, what Counsel Elliott was referring to was the language that was originally provided to the council in terms of an amendment to Rule 26. So the, there were two paragraphs. The first paragraph was what is being recommended by the Subcommittee, and according to your rules, you will have it again before you in writing, and then you'll be able to act on it one week after having received it in writing. So you'll have a sort of refresher language before you. Second, the second paragraph is the paragraph that the Subcommittee has sent back to the Law Department to work on some more and to pursue it to our discussion, seek to improve it, and that will come back, that will go back to the Rules Subcommittee.
So this will be on the agenda at the next meeting?
This will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
We'll have it ahead of time, too.
And you'll have, right, you'll have it a week before the council is to act on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Fine.
So we did receive this language back in 18th, just, I just wanted to let the public know on May 18th, and that's what we were speaking from, and I did ask the clerk to forward it again so everybody would have it, so. And it is going to come back again.
Yours.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I need a second on, to accept by Counsel Conway, thank you. Next, 6.2, wire inspection. National Grid requests permission to install new pole to service new home at 16 Claritin Street. Need a motion to accept and adopt a company in order, some move.
Are we doing with this? Again, where's this one going?
Going to the pole to the 16 Claritin Street.
All right. I'm going to not vote for these. I just, I think we support National Grid workers across the board. It's been three weeks, there's no negotiation, so I'm not going to support any National Grid stuff until, until they come to an agreement, so. I don't know if we want to do a delay or if we just want to vote on it.
Yes, Counsel Malanazo.
I know it's, I know it's separate, but I think it's all the same. National Grid is National Grid.
Right. And I understand where Counsel Leahy's coming from, but we actually referred this to the wire inspector last time, and it's a single-family house, someone's trying to get power turned on so they can move into their house. So again, I plan to support this, but again, I certainly respect Counsel Leahy's position.
Counsel.
I share Counsel Malanazo's concern. On the one hand, you want to penalize the National Grid. I do want to. However, this will impact on this individual, the resident that we don't want to hurt, and so, you know, I would, I would support it, but if it's just a big project or some project other than a single home here, I wouldn't support either, but this one, I have to because it hurt this resident, so, thank you.
So we have two. So the thing is, I need a motion to accept by Counsel Malanazo.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Cirillo. So roll call, why don't we have a roll call on this?
Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
No.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
No.
Seven, seven years.
All right, I believe we have the same thing towards, for 16 Claritin Street. National Grid requests permission to install handheld services at 16 Claritin Street. So I need a motion to accept, adopt a company in order by Counsel Malanazo, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
No.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
No.
Seven years.
All right, before we do 6.4, Madam Manager, this is to install an underground electric conduit along Quebec Street from Blossom Street to Maple Street. Now, this is not a single home.
That, that, thank you. That was my understanding from what the representative from National Grid said last two weeks ago when, when she was here, that this was to get access to a single home.
Oh, it was. Okay. All right, I need a motion to accept and adopt a company in order by, that's Counsel Malanazo, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
I.
I'm sorry.
Can, I just had a question. It says here, a location approximately shown, as shown on plan attached, and I don't see a plan attached. Does anyone have a plan?
It was attached on three prior agendas. This one is just a report from the wire inspector that's attached to it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
We don't put that on yet. Roll call. Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Malanazo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
No.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
No.
Seven years.
Next, we have petitions. Cassidy Baldwin requests installation of a handicap pocket sign at 93 Lincoln Street. A motion to refer to traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Noon. Next, 7.2, Simone Kanui requests reimbursement of towing charges. Motion to refer to the Water Department for report and recommendation.
Some of.
By Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Mersey. 7.3, University of Massachusetts Law requests City Council convey an easement over small portion of the Howe Bridge right away. Motion to refer to the Water Department for report and recommendation by.
Some of.
Counsel Cirillo, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. All right, next, we have motions. 8.1, by Counsel Leahy, requests City Manager to update the City Council on community outreach procedures. Need a second by Counsel.
Sure, thank you. Through you, Madam Manager, this is, came about from the meeting you had with the, for the new superintendent of police. So just if we could take a look at what we're doing and how we're doing it, how we get information out to the community via tweets or Facebook or our city page or whatever, just kind of review and see what we did. We have notes from that meeting, so we can refer back to them. Thank you.
Further discussion? Next, by Counsel Leahy, request City Manager to update City Council's mental health resource throughout the city. Need a second by Counsel Noon.
Thank you. Through you, the manager, if we could just get some sort of a report on what we have available for services throughout the city. My main interest is, I've heard that the Lowell Health Department or the Lowell Mental Health Department over on Church Street has gone out to maybe a different contractor, and I think they're moving from Church Street over to Jackson Street, and I, it's my understanding that they might be downsizing. So I didn't know what that means for the city, because I don't think we should be downsizing on any of our services. So they presently have a contract over at the First Baptist Church over in that plaza, and it's my understanding that their new location will be somewhere over on Jackson Street with the Community Health Building. So if we could just get, just an update on that and see where we are, so, to make sure that we're servicing the needs of everybody in the community. Thank you.
All right, 8.3 was taken care of. 8.4, by Counsel Elliott, request City Manager to provide a report regarding pipeline excavation on recently paved streets. Need a second, Counsel Malanazo.
Well.
Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself. It's just, we drive through the city a lot and been on a lot of side streets, and the pipelines that are going in, they're just left in terrible condition. Some, you know, occasionally you find one that is done pretty well, but, you know, how can, this is another issue of how can we get the, and I know it's contractors who are doing the work to do a better job, and restoring the streets to the conditions that they were in. We have streets that have just been paved, and, and I think Counsel Leahy probably had this motion up just recently, so I guess it's just out of frustration that how can, how can we put these streets back in the condition that they were in? And if it requires that they go, you know, I don't expect them to go sidewalk to sidewalk, but perhaps the swath that they have to replace makes the, you know, makes the, it's a little bit more expensive, I get it, but anyway, that's, that's the motion, and look forward to the report. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, the next motion by Counsel Elliott, Counsel Malanazo, doesn't need a second, request City Council to discuss establishing a Human Rights Commission similar to numerous other cities in the Commonwealth. Counsel Elliott and Counsel Malanazo.
I'd just like to amend this to refer this motion to the City Manager if there is support for it to look at other communities. I spoke to, it was, it was a number of months ago, this just didn't, just didn't come, come to me. As I looked into this, most, well, all major cities have a commission of this nature. I know that we have an immigration commission, I'm not sure how active it is, but considering Boston, Springfield, Cambridge, and then I just started doing more research, and there's 30-plus communities that have such commissions or councils. I thought it was important for the fourth largest city in the, in the city to have something, particularly in light of some of the circumstances that are going on, to have full representation across the city from every community, every culture, to ensure that, that rights, and, believe me, I believe that this city with, with our police department, with the City Council, with our neighborhood organizations, with all of our cultural organizations, there is trust. And I just, I just feel that this is, you know, something that, that will take it that much further, a step further, and so that's why I brought it forward, just to have a discussion, if there's a will to look into it, to have the manager look into it, to see exactly what other communities have. They're all very similar, just to ensure protection of every community and individual in the city against discrimination or, and just to ensure that all rights and privileges are granted to each and every citizen. So I didn't want to not do anything. I thought it was important to bring this forward and to take a look at it and get it from the, get a report on the manager. We have a commission on disabilities, commission on veterans, eight, Council on Aging Parks Commission, and I feel this is, would be an important step to extend that trust that we have throughout our communities.
Pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can certainly support the amendment to refer the motion to the City Manager's Office for report, but again, as Counsel Elliott said, a lot of communities, over 30 communities in Massachusetts have actually put together a Human Rights Commission. And again, I signed on to this motion without looking to do anything in the way of embarrassing the Immigration Commission. I think that they do do good work. This is not what this is about. I did some research on my own, and just as an example, in the city of Worcester, they have a Human Rights Commission which was established to promote the city's human rights policy. So out of the commission, we could possibly come up with a human rights policy. And it's the policy of the city of Worcester to assure that every individual shall have equal access to and benefit from all public services, to protect every individual in the enjoyment and exercise of civil rights, and to encourage and bring about mutual understanding and respect among all individuals of the city of Worcester. It is the goal of the Human Rights Commission to ensure that all city residents are treated fairly and equally by eliminating bigotry, discrimination, intolerance, and prejudice. So again, refer this to the City Manager's Office, look what other communities have done in the Commonwealth, and then bring, bring it back to, to the, to the City Council. But again, with not my intent to overstep, you know, my bounds or our bounds with the Immigration Commission in the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Pass it on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good motion. It showed that we are open and transparent, and we to explore a way to establish one that is Human Rights Commission. It showed the resident that we are open, transparent with the process that we, down the road, will go through this process and having this individual serve on this as there was as possible in addressing things that's happened in the city, if there's any at all, which I do not, you know, looking forward to it, so. But I think this is a great motion to explore, have asked the manager to do so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, by Counsel Conway, request City Manager to work with the Lowell Police Department on installation of surveillance cameras in high narcotics trafficking usage areas throughout the city. Counsel Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I need a second by Counsel Mersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I know that this is something that we certainly have talked about in many different forums in the city of Lowell. I think that it obviously is a problem, and I think that in some areas it might be getting worse, and I think that when we have illegal activity going on in a particular neighborhood, needless to say, the community itself, that, that particular community doesn't feel safe. They, there are certainly many concerns, and when you take a look at the bigger picture, you're, you're looking at the fact that, you know, if, if we do have some type of surveillance system, and I think many municipalities have it today, and, and again, the range can, price range can go from, from little to very expensive, but I think in the long run, it will certainly help out the city when, when individuals know that there is a surveillance camera possibly. What, you know, the, should we say, the bad guys will think twice before they, before they get involved. And also, I think the, the community and the neighborhoods will feel a lot safer, too, and it will certainly give some additional help to the police officers so that they can track down individuals that do have, that are doing illegal situations in the, in the city. Now, also, I'm acutely aware of the fact that in this particular budget, which we just passed, and, and it was a bare bones, and, and again, Madam Manager, you and your team did a great job putting that together, realizing that, that, that budget has already been etched in stone, and the chances of any additional monies, of course, would be extremely limited, if any at all. So what I was thinking as a possibility is that if you and your office could take a look at the, the surveillance cameras and what is done in other cities, what the effect is, my research shows that for each dollar that's spent on, on this surveillance camera, it, it reaps a, a one, a dollar fifty back in a profit, because again, economic development, the lack of break-ins, and I think, again, we have a lot of surveillance cameras, I'm sure, with, that's connected with businesses. But I also envision the, the fact that maybe over a period of three years, we could phase a program like this in. So again, I, I'd like to ask for a report on this and get your opinion, sit down with the police, the police department, and, and see if this, if it's feasible for the, for the city of Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Cirillo, then Counsel Noon.
Hi, yes. I, I'm unsure about whether or not this.
Hi, yes, I, I'm unsure about whether or not this would be, would work for the city, because where, people are selling narcotics out of their homes, are we gonna put surveillance cameras on our streets, looking at homes, and are they gonna be mobile? Because once the, the sellers of the narcotics know that the cameras are there, they'll just go to a different area in the city where there are no cameras, unless we're gonna fill the city with cameras. I just, um, I just, I'm wondering if this, I think that our police department is doing a good job with, with keeping the narcotics trafficking down and, and working really hard. So I, I don't necessarily think that this, this would, would help us, because they'll, the narcotics dealers will just go to a different area where there are no cameras, and, and they'll just hop around the city and sell out of their homes. Thank you.
Council Noon, then Council Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. This motion do two things. Giving the recent incident, shooting incident, this mo, this motion, putting the, install the civilian, civilian camera, not only address the, 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 the high narcotic trafficking or selling, but also the hotspot area. Our law enforcement are very smart, they know where the hotspot areas are. So we are not, I don't think Council Conway asking to put it throughout the city. There's a hotspot area, and I know the managers will talk to Chief of Police and, uh, 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 smart, you know, detective or investigator who know exactly where it should be at. So this is a good thing, because it addresses issue of drug dealer, drug trafficking, but also the hotspot area, do a preventive approach, and this is a great thing if we can do it. And we are not, uh, uh, for me, I, I don't think, I'm saying put everywhere in the city, the hotspot area, we know, even the recent incident happened, it happened around that area a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, that shooting on Smith Street, on Westwood, you see? So we know exactly where we should be focused, this camera on, at. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I threw you to the city manager. They, the motion really just asks for a report from the city manager, which is fine, but if, if there's no objection, there's two things that I would like to see included in the report, and one would be the recommendation from the police department, and whether or not they think this would be an effective tool for them, and second, the estimated cost of archiving the videotape, which might be very substantial.
Council Mersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend Counselor Noon, he said it exactly right. There are a lot of hotspots in the city. Last month, I made a motion about a particular hotspot in the city, and I did want cameras up there, maybe not a few, but maybe one, and that is up on First Street. I want to catch the people that are dumping their trash and their everything as if it's the landfill off of the embankment onto, from First Street. I want to catch the people that are doing it. And, and I know that there's certain hotspots around the city that we need the camera, that's not asking for too much. So I commend Counselor Conway for that motion, it is exactly on target, and we need them. We're not saying we want them all through the city, although if I had the money, I would have them on every single street, because I think at one point or another, you're gonna have crime, and things happen on different streets in the city. And I'd like to be the one that can say, we found out who did it to this person, we got the picture right here. So it's very proper that we do have cameras throughout the city in the hotspots. Thank you.
Council Leahy, then Council Conway.
Thank you. I like the idea, and I like the idea because, I'm not sure, Madam Manager, can we still use funds from money that we confiscate? Don't we get access to some of that?
From the trust fund? Let me just, Connor, do you know the answer?
I think you're referring to the law enforcement trust fund, there are certain restrictions on the use of the funds.
Yeah.
But we can certainly look into that as a source of.
So it may not cost us much money, and it's, you know, if you have hotspots, you film them, there's your evidence, and hopefully you can build a, a case, and, and then, you know, it's that much easier to prosecute people. So I like the motion, I'm looking forward to the report, and any other information we can get would be helpful.
Thank you. Council Conway.
Yeah, just very quickly, again, the whole idea was to, was to receive a report, and again, the, the, with my research, I found that the, it was a wide range of the different types of surveillance cameras that could, that was available. And, and as Counselor Noon pointed out, again, the hotspots, absolutely the police will know. I, I wouldn't necessarily know, but they would know and be able to, again, minimize the number of cameras available. And, and the, and the last thing, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said a few minutes ago, is that it certainly could be phased in instead of over a period of, you know, over a period of three years, let's say, and it might be a good idea, any type additional monies, whether it's grant monies that might be involved with this, whatever. But as I said, the, the budget is set for this year, totally understand that, and this is something that if we do it, we want to make sure we get it right, and that we can afford it, and therefore you have a, a year to, to examine the, the process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Anybody else comment? Okay. We have to go into executive session regarding matters of litigation, namely Hoot et L versus City of Lowell and other pending cases, as well as discussion regarding upcoming negotiations on waste and recycling contracts. Public discussions of any of these matters would be, have a detrimental effect on the city's position. I need a motion to enter an executive session, by Council Melonazo, second by Council Mersey.
Can I offer an amendment?
Pardon?
Can I offer an amendment?
Yes.
Just that we adjourn from the executive session?
Yes, we will. Yes. Need a roll call? Council Mersey.
Yes.
Council Melonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
And we will adjourn from the executive session.
Thank you.
Council Leahy.